Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the February 11th meeting of the Harwich Planning Board. My name is Duncan Berry. I'm the chair. We always begin this with noticing that Mass General Law requires me to inquire if anybody intends to record this event. Please tell me if you are. All right. I declare the meeting open. It is 6:31. I'd like to invite you to join me to stand and recite the plug allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening's agenda, as it's been printed out, is we've reversed the order, so we're going to start with the continued public hearing from January 28, 2025, PB 2024-35, Town of Harwich Select Board through Town Administration seeks special permit for fast food/takeout restaurant with request for a waiver from site plan review special permit, Section 325-55F. The purpose of the project is to create a workforce development program in partnership with the Grateful Mug Cafe nonprofit and Harwich Chamber of Commerce. There will be no change to the building site, and the building will not contain a commercial kitchen. Purpose of the program will be to sell prepackaged baked goods and beverages. The applications pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-140 and 325-51 and Master on the Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9. Location is One Schoolhouse Road, Assessors Map 14, Parcel F3-A. Property is split, a split parcel located in the Commercial Village CV and Village Commercial Overlay District, VCOD, and residential medium-density RM zoning districts. Before we get going, I just wanted to thank everybody. I apologize that at our last meeting, we were not able to hear your case. We have a full complement tonight. We have a full quorum. And I think we had roughly, I think it was 60 something odd meetings before, since then the last time we had not met quorum. So I regret that it was for such a large and distinguished group of citizens here tonight. So I take it, who will be, will you start, Joe? Our Town Administrator, Mr. Powers, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members, to you and the planning board. Thank you for this evening and appreciate the commentary. However, as Town Administrator, I'll say that we'll make sure that the Select Board Interview Committee makes sure you have a full complement and whatever you need to make sure that doesn't have to happen again. But we understand and we appreciate. Joe Powers, Town Administrator here officially on behalf of the Harwich Select Board and Town Administration. However, I want to put on the record that I'm joined by my boss and colleague in government, Jeff Handler, Chair of the Select Board, and at some point would certainly defer to Mr. Handler. However, we are here as primary applicant, if you will, and primary site owner, I should say, for what is, in my opinion, the greatest possible use for the greatest group of people in our community and with that enthusiasm and excitement here this evening to support the packet, the material that we've submitted for this application and for this use. We know that we relied upon our good fund, Griffin Rider and the folks at EDR for the site plan review. I've worked with staff and so quite simply here this evening, here to answer any questions, but also to evidence the great support that these folks have through the Harwich Select Board and certainly Harwich Town Administration. We would urge you to look favorable upon this request this evening. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Ms. Flynn.
Okay, great. Matt, are we?
Yeah, we're good to go.
All right, great. Just gonna do a quick PowerPoint.
The Grateful Mug or?
The Grateful Mug, please. So just to get everyone acclimated, this is the Town of Harwich. You can see, as we're moving, oop, sorry, to the next slide, the location of the project is in the center of Harwich Port along Route 28. If you can see the buildings to the Cape Cod Bank Trust on to the far left, heading west towards Dennis, and the Embers Restaurant to the right. So the Harwich Chamber is the small dot right in the middle. Sorry.
Sorry, sir. My PowerPoint isn't working.
So anyway, the project is located in the downtown Harwich. You'll notice that the property is located in the Harwich Chamber of Commerce. It's on municipal property. That's why the Town of Harwich is acting as the applicant tonight on behalf, in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Grateful Mug. The application tonight is for a site plan waiver, and the zoning districts are in the Commercial Village, the Village Commercial Overlay District, as well as the residential medium-density zoning districts. There are no proposed changes or alterations or additions to the existing building. The existing building will not add a commercial kitchen to the facilities, and the overall purpose of the project is to create a workforce development proposal and program within the Chamber of Commerce office building. And so there are two requests, one for a special permit waiver, site plan review waiver, as well as a fast food takeout special permit request with limited, with specific conditions relative to the commercial kitchen. So the applicable laws under Massachusetts General Law are Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Code of Harwich, Sections 325-140, 325-55, and 325-55F for site plan review waiver. The property is located at One Schoolhouse Road, Assessors Map 14, Parcel F3-A-0, which is a split parcel, and the property, again, is located in the downtown Harwich area. And the application was submitted to all of the town departments. There were no comments or concerns other than members of town hall staff felt the project was for a good cause and had positive comments for the application. And again, the site is located on the town property. The application and hearing materials included a Form A and memo from administration, which is in your packet, the Grateful Mug workforce development narrative, which is also in your packet, the parking and traffic review by Griffin Rider, in addition to the Butters Notice Application, staff report, and letters of support. Staff would recommend that a site plan review special permit waiver be granted for the following reasons. The Grateful Mug Cafe and Workforce Development Program is limited in scope to no more than six participants and instructors each day within the office. The Grateful Mug and Workforce Development Program will have a minimal impact to surrounding businesses, traffic, parking, and pedestrian safety. There will be no change to the existing building or surrounding parking area. There will be no commercial kitchen. The interior changes will be minor. There will be two countertop areas, as well as a coffee area and a wash sink that will be added per the Board of Health, and but there'll be no seating. The proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area. The Grateful Mug Workforce Development Program is a great opportunity for the Town of Harwich, Chamber of Commerce, and especially the participating clients in need of workforce experience in a safe and supportive work environment. So with that, Mr. Chair, that's my evaluation.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Mr. Handler, delighted to see you this evening after last night's brief meeting.
It's nice to be on this side for a change. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, thank you and good evening. My name is Jeff Handler. I'm the Chair of your Select Board. Usually I have to speak as a resident and not a Select Board member when addressing other committees and boards in the town, but tonight's an interesting change as I get to speak as both, and I'm proud to do that. With all that's going around our town and everything that's going on, this truly is a privilege and a pleasure to leave my nice warm home and drive all the way to town hall and speak in support for such an incredible, incredible venture. As our Town Administrator so perfectly put it, the Select Board has unanimously voted to support this project. So that is me speaking as a Select Board member. Now, if I may indulge Mr. Chair, I'd like to speak a little bit from the resident's side. Shayna, you make everybody around you better. We are so very lucky to have you here in the Town of Harwich, and I just wanted you to know that from my personal opinion. The group of just amazing people that you have with you, you're all so powerful, you're all so dedicated, you're all going to continue to do great and amazing things. And again, Harwich is extremely lucky and fortunate to have you all with us. What's happening here tonight is nothing short of exceptional. This is what I would consider makes a good town great, something like this, something that's being put forward with the community's support that comes behind it. I mean, it's been an incredible, to just witness what has gone on in a very short amount of time. I think back to my moment in the dunk tank where I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't get it, is that, is that young man here who dunked me seven? Well, Rory was like an assassin. Yeah, I mean, I, I planned up being there for four hours. I did 25 minutes and tapped out, said, I gotta go. So if that doesn't speak to the courage and the work ethic of the group that we're speaking about here tonight, I don't know what does. So, you know, Mr. Chair, this is an opportunity to say yes, this is an opportunity to say yes to a venture that will make so many people rise up and just do incredible, great things for our town. So as I said to you last time, it's nice to know that you all don't have to do it alone anymore. The Town of Harwich is right there with you and behind you. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Good evening, Cindy.
Good evening. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. Hard to follow him, but I will anyway. Here are two reasons similar to Jeff. As the Director of the Chamber, the night that you presented here to the Select Board, I sat in my chair and I said, oh, yeah, we need to be part of this. So look, every time I see each of you, Rory and all the others, Christie and everybody, this is just going to be such an amazing thing to do and be a part of. As a Chamber, we get to do things that will help our town as well as our members. What will happen after we have these wonderful participants trained, they'll get to go out into the workforce of the town that they live and love so very much. So we'll be helping our members, our staff, be helping these wonderful people go out into the community and be a part of it. So after '22, guess what, guys? You have a place to be, and I am so very proud. And I hope I don't cry, but I think I might, which is not really serious. But Shayna and Michelle and everyone on the team, thank you so much for letting us be a part of this, and I'm so glad, after looking at so many different places and with the guidance of our community development team, that we found the right home for you. So after tonight, welcome to the Harwich Chamber.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public which would address the board? No? Well, then I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
So I would move that the Planning Board votes to adopt the following findings of fact in the above entitled matter. One, the subject property is located at One Schoolhouse Road, Assessors Parcel ID 14-F3-A-0, approximately 0.5 acres, and is located in the Commercial Village CV, Village Commercial Overlay District, VCOD, and residential medium-density RM zoning districts. Two, the Town of Harwich Select Board own the property and municipal parking lot at One Schoolhouse Road, which is the physical address of the Chamber of Commerce. Three, even though the town is the applicant, the town is working in partnership with the Harwich Chamber of Commerce and the Grateful Mug Cafe nonprofit to establish a workforce development program specifically designed to assist adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Four, the applicant has applied for a fast food takeout restaurant in order to implement the Grateful Mug Cafe's workforce development program at the Chamber of Commerce in partnership with the Town of Harwich. Five, the applicant has applied under Harwich Zoning Bylaw, Section 325-55F, for a waiver of site plan review. Six, the proposal meets the standard to grant a waiver of site plan review. The proposal does not substantially change the relationship of structures to the site or to the abutting properties and structures. Seven, the Grateful Mug will occupy existing space in the Chamber of Commerce building and will not require any site modifications of the building. Eight, the interior changes included, include the construction of two countertop areas, hand wash sink, and a coffee area. There will be no seating and no commercial kitchen. Nine, the workforce development program is very limited and narrow in scope, therefore there will be minimal impact, if any, to surrounding businesses, traffic, parking, and pedestrian safety. Ten, the application is dated December 18, 2024, and includes the applicable and relevant submission materials required by the Board and otherwise meets the applicable administrative requirements of the Harwich Code.
Have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
At this time, I would move that the Planning Board vote to grant a waiver of site plan review and also grant a fast food takeout restaurant use special permit based on the prior adopted findings of fact and subject to the following conditions of approval. One, the proposed fast food takeout restaurant use special permit will not adversely affect traffic and safety. The proposed limited use is compatible with surrounding land uses such as other fast food and restaurant businesses along Route 28 in the Harwich Port area. The site is within the Commercial Village CD, Village Commercial Overlay District, VCOD, and residential medium-density RM zoning districts. Two, the project shall be undertaken consistent with the plans referenced in the application materials set out above. Three, there will be no commercial kitchen installed within the chamber building. Four, the Grateful Mug Cafe and Workforce Development Program shall be limited to six participants, which include clients and instructors. Five, all food items shall be prepared offsite. Six, the Board of Health shall have to approve any, approve the wash sink and work area for public health and safety reasons. Seven, any new signage shall comply with the Town of Harwich Code, Section 325-23-23235. Eight, the decision shall run with the property. Nine, the decision shall be filed with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds with a copy returned to the Planning Board. Ten, the special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision hearing, bearing the certification of the town clerk, that 20 days have elapsed after the filing of the decision and that either no appeal has been filed or that an appeal has been filed within such time period is recorded in the Registry of Deeds and indexed under the name of the property owner of record and the parcel address. Eleven, the special permit shall lapse within two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referenced in General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 17, from the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause, or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. Twelve, changes to the site not authorized under this decision will require further Planning Board review and modification to this decision. And thirteen, further provisions of the site plan review special permit case, PB 2002-43, not modified hearing, shall remain in full effect.
Have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So we move on this evening after that wonderful piece of business, and I just request that the celebrations and champagne uncorking take place beyond the doors of this meeting. And thank you all for turning out such numbers. Appreciate having you. It's nice seeing this room full. We continue this evening with another continued hearing from January 28, 2025. It's PB 2024-34, Tigger Realty Trust, Kenneth EU Banks, trustee, through its agent, BCS Group Incorporated, Brian G. Yergation, Yergation, okay. P E L E D A P seeks approval for a site plan review special permit. The proposed project is to remove any existing concrete pavement and structures in order to develop a new one-story steel building totaling 7,398 square feet with 20 parking spaces on site. The application is pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich, Section 325-51 and 325-55, and Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 9 and 11. Property is located at 237 Queen Anne Road, Assessors Map 58, Parcel N4-2-0, and the parcel is approximately 1.82 acres. The parcel is in the Industrial Limited IL zoning district. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Brian Yergation. I'm a professional engineer with BSC Group, and I'm here representing the applicant tonight, Tigger Realty Trust. We are seeking site plan approval, special permit, for a proposed pre-engineered steel-metal building at 237 Queen Anne Road. The, just give it, give you an overview of the property. The property itself is partially developed. It has about a 135-foot wide vegetative buffer from the road back into the site. The property has been, more or less, partially been used in conjunction with the adjacent property, which is located to the west, 231 Queen Anne Road, which is also owned by the applicant. So with, with this project, you know, we'd like to put a new building on the site, but it would be, the cross connection between the two properties would be eliminated, so each site would be operated on its own. Each site would have its own driveway, and there would be no physical interconnection, which currently exists. Right now, there's a lot, in the middle of the site, there's a lot of pavement, concrete storage bins, which are used for material, et cetera. And so all of that stuff is going to be cleaned up. The project itself will require municipal water service from the town, as well as electric, telecommunications, and gas. This project will be served by a septic system, which we've designed closer to the, it's really centrally located in the site, but along the western boundary, 750 gallon-per-day system, completely in accordance with the Title V in the Town of Harwich regulations. Stormwater management, all the water that drains off the building roof, as well as, will be collected and routed to a recharge facility, as well as all the stormwater that is, that runs off of the paved areas of the site, will all be collected by catch basins and conveyed via storm drains to the back of the site, where we have a, an infiltration that's equipped with a sediment floor bay, which is a water quality structure. So we have, we have all the stormwater management figured out. Everything is designed in complete accordance with the Mass DEP Stormwater Management Standards, as well as the Town of Harwich standards. And lastly, the building itself will be used for storage, contractor storage. There'll be vehicles inside there potentially, and so we've designed floor drains. The building will be divided into five equivalent-sized or equally-sized bays, and each bay will have a centrally-located floor drain. All the floor drains would discharge out to a drain, which will go to an industrial wastewater storage tank, and that's, you know, in the event that there was snow and ice and so forth on the tires, that water won't just sit and collect in the building, it will go into that, and if needed, over time, although it's something I would, that would be needed that often, but a licensed hauler would have to come and empty that and, you know, take that material to a licensed facility for disposal. That's, one other thing I did want to touch on, too, is landscaping. So I mentioned that there, there is a pretty good size wooded buffer that exists right now. I will say the trees in it are, on average, you know, six to 10-inch size. They're kind, it's kind of sparsely populated with the trees, but there is a lot of dense undergrowth. I understand that, you know, the town would prefer that we keep a lot of that vegetation, and I guess one of the things I wanted to ask, we'd like to be able to keep all the mature trees, but to just clean out some of the undergrowth that's in there. Wanted to see if the town would be amenable to that. I think it would just look a lot nicer to see the trees rather than all the viney undergrowth. And then we would supplement that with some arborvitae's in kind of a double-row staggered configuration as needed, but I have shown them on the plan, kind of in proximity to the entrance, where we think that would probably be where we'd want to put some additional trees. That's essentially the project, and be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you. Ms. Flynn.
Matt, could we try this one more time? Yes, for 237. So again, here we are from the Town of Harwich, the Atlantic Ocean to the south, Route 6 to the north. The project is along Queen Anne Road, where the, 237, where the red dot is, in the Industrial Limited, and the surrounding properties along Queen Anne Road, and the property is highlighted out in yellow. And to the west, or to the left of the building, is the adjoining property that the applicant was referencing, that's also owned by Tigger Real Estate, or Tigger Realty Trust, excuse me. The property is within the Industrial Limited zone, and again, there is the vegetated buffer along Queen Anne Road to the north, as well as to the south, and partly to the, to the east as well. The property, the applicant seeks a site plan review special permit. The proposed project is to remove any existing concrete pavement and shed structures to develop a new one-story steel building totaling 7,398 square feet with 24 parking spaces on site. The proposed use is for construction, is for the construction industry, including storage of equipment and materials. The building shall contain five bays with a maximum of two workers per bay. The applicable laws and regulations for site plan review special permit fall under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 9 and 11, in the Harwich Zoning Bylaw, Sections 325-51 Special Permit and 325-55 Site Plan Review Special Permit. The property, again, is located at 237 Queen Anne Road, Map 58, Parcel N4-2-0, in the Industrial Limited zoning district. The application and materials were sent to other town departments. We did not receive any comments or concern from other town departments. The application and hearing documents include a Form A and narrative-stamped plan, as well as the letter of authorization and municipal lien certificate, site plan review, and a revised site plan review dated February 6, that we received on February 7, highlighting some of the landscaping changes and some of the additional recommendations from VHB relative to site plan review. Also in your packet is a stormwater report by BCS Group, in addition to VHB's Stormwater and Drainage Plan Review, the Butter Application, and Application fee. As far as site plan general review, the zoning requirements, the proposed project is a construction industry contractor storage, which is a permitted use. The building placement, the proposed 7,398-square-foot steel building with five garage bays, is located to the north end of the property, on the east side of the property. The building will be set back 43 feet from Queen Anne Road. The road access and egress will be 48.5 feet. The road access and egress will be 48.5 feet for a curb cut from Queen Anne Road to serve as access and egress to the property. The parking layout and loading area, the parking spaces were revised. There are 20 parking spaces, including two handicap spots. The parking requirements for a warehouse require 24 spots. However, there are 10 spots on the inside of the bay. The zoning doesn't account for the inside parking, so I did want to note that. However, there is a grassy section along, between the two parking spots on the site plan that could serve as overflow parking. And given the location of the building, where they do also have five bays, in discussions with the building commissioner, it was recommended that requiring a loading zone wouldn't be necessary, that the space and the access to the building going in and out would be adequate enough for loading and storage of materials as well as equipment. And the revised plan does have 20 parking spots and 20 parking spots in the inside. Again, the grassy area could serve as potential overflow parking. And the planning board does have some discretion relative to parking conditions. And also, as an alternative, the town parking, or, I'm sorry, company-owned cars or trucks have to be, have to have a dedicated parking spot. So they did factor in at least six parking spots for each of the bays, for each building. So I did want to highlight that, and I do feel that the parking is ample and adequate, particularly with the overflow for utilizing the lawn space. For traffic, the proposed project will not adversely impact traffic flow or safety along Queen Anne Road. A traffic study therefore was not recommended. The septic design and system will need approval from the Board of Health. Landscaping, plan and screening, the revised site plan did include a stockade fence for screening. The application has, again, offered to maintain some of the natural existing vegetation and trees. For any signage, they will need to be dark sky compliant as well as consistent with Harwich zoning code 325, Sections 325, 23, 28. The applicant did indicate that any exterior lighting will be off, will be located off of the building. There won't be any mounted lighting on the site. And there were no waivers requested at this time. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Questions?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, this is about the landscaping and the 135-foot vegetative buffer. You said you want to clean up the undergrowth. Is there a reason why?
Primarily aesthetics.
Is there a reason to keep it? There's been a recent clearing of a big piece of property on Queen Anne, and it seems the thing that is the most imperal on Queen Anne is a tree or a leaf. So if there's not an imperative to clean the undergrowth, can it remain?
Yeah, I mean, it certainly could. We just, I guess the real reason is we just think it would make the building look nicer if some of that was cleaned up. There are some nice mature trees there, which are all going to remain. But yeah, I mean, if that's the board's, you know, wishes, we can certainly keep the undergrowth. I guess I don't think it would look as nice, but...
Sometimes the undergrowth has a different purpose. It has, you know, more of an environmental purpose for the fast-receding foxes and other things that are on the cape. So undergrowth has a reason to be, unless there's invasives, and that's a reason to take them out.
Emily, you had a...
Mary, was your comment related to Anne's, or was it separate?
No.
Okay. I had a question on the parking. So just on that grassy lawn area, why would we just park? Is there a benefit to parking on it versus just adding the additional floor spots?
The benefit is that, you know, less pavement is better. And we don't feel that we're actually going to be needing to utilize that additional spaces. But we kept the space there in the event that overflow was necessary for whatever, for, you know, a certain period of time or something like that. But, I mean, we just feel like, you know, the more pavement generates more stormwater, and it's really not necessary for the use.
So my follow-up to hers was just, why aren't we asking for a waiver then? I mean, we see parking waivers from time to time. Is it not appropriate to have a parking waiver in this situation? I'm a little uncomfortable with that. I don't recall us ever approving inside parking spaces as parking lot spaces in the past, so that just gives me a little pause.
They have 20 spots outside designated, and I thought, you know, when I did some measurements with the lawn space, the overflow, it did make up for the four additional spots that are required. And they do have two designated handicap spots, which they could also remove one and capture a parking spot in that capacity as well, as another alternative.
The grassy area would make up for the four that they're short?
Correct.
Okay.
You okay with that?
I guess I am, if it's, if the board is, you know.
I, Mary, I didn't consider advising a waiver of the parking because the zoning does allow the planning board some discretion in the Industrial Limited. So that was my recommendation as an alternative that I felt was appropriate.
I've got a quick question that maybe casts some light on this. How many vehicles are going to be stored on the site? What is the, you know, what's envisioned?
On the owner?
Yeah.
My envision is, as we live around Cape Cod, the type of companies that come to us and need rental spaces are landscapers. And when they come, they usually come with maybe two trucks, and then they go to five trucks, and then all the cars and everybody in the car. Well, I don't want that to happen to my building. So if they're allowed two spaces, they'll have two spaces, and that's it. So what's going to happen is I'll be very limited to the type of people that I'm going to rent to, because I don't have a choice. They may not at all sincere. You have to look around and you see everything that's going on on Queen Anne Road. And I go, okay, do I want that? No. And I'm of the age now that, I keep telling my kids, it's going to go in the trust, in the trust that you can't sell the property. You have to live with this property. You have to rent. You have to be a good landlord, and this is going to go maybe to my great-great-grandparents. You know, so, because that's the way the land is going, you know. I don't want to sell it. I bought it in 1999, and I think it's been a good thing for me.
So in other words, you're not going to have teams showing up for each bay? It'll just be two vehicles per bay?
Because they just devastate it.
Right.
They do. I mean, it's taken me a long time to fill up my bays from 1999 because I've been very selective, probably for... And that's something I've had to, you know, I could have made a lot more money in the long run, but I didn't want that. I wanted some control over it. And I'm not criticizing anybody else, I'm not. It's just that there's a need for it, but there's too many cars. There's too many trailers. There's too many machines. There's, you know, I have my own machines I have to deal with. It's going to force me to do all that stuff. So you're not pushing me out of business. You're just making me clean up all my stuff.
Well, that answered my question and actually answers my concern about the parking. The second question that I have that might be germane to this, 48-foot curb cut seems awfully long. Is that, are you expecting special vehicles to be, with a big radius to be turning in, or is this just...
No, so we, it's a, the drive itself, once the curb returns, it's 24-foot wide, which is, you know, as you know, the standard commercial width. But that measurement of the 48 feet and change, that's from curb return to curb return at the street line. That's not even on-site at that point.
On the arc, about it, okay.
Right.
All right, thank you. Sorry. Mary, sorry about that.
I'm sorry, one more quick. And the reason we put a 25-foot turning radius for emergency vehicles, so they can get a ladder truck in there if they needed to.
Through you to Christine. Is it 20? I'm just reading through the proposed findings, and I just want to make sure that I have it correct. The requirement is 24. They have 20. Does that include the two handicaps, or is it 20 plus two handicaps?
It's the 20, including the two handicaps.
Okay.
Any further questions? Yes, Harry.
It looks like there's a bit of a steep grade drop toward the back of the lot. Will there be vehicle access back there? And what do you envision using that space for, if any? I see that there's plumbing back there, but other than that, will there, it looks like it's a bit of a hill to get down, and there's no road indicated, so...
Correct. So that area will not be used at all, other than for stormwater management? And there is, as Christine mentioned, there is going to be a six-foot-high vinyl fence, stockade fence, all around the yard. The yard is what I'm referring to, is the area behind the building or south of the building, the rear, the middle and the rear portion of the lot. And so there will be no vehicles that go beyond the limits of the fence.
Okay, and then no use of the space, there's open space adjacent to the buildings to the east of the driveway? Would that be?
There's a few, so towards the 231 on the north there, there'll be a few trees that we're planting, if we're looking in the same area.
But note, I'm trying to orient myself by the compass.
North is, north is to Queen Anne Road. Queen Anne Road is north.
So it would be to the south of the build, of the new building. There is, and to the east of the paved area, there's an open area that would be inside the fence that you just described. And I don't see any use for that septic tank there? But is there any planned use of that area other than...
Just contractor storage.
So is it going to be paved?
No, it will remain gravel.
Okay.
And it will be fenced in.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any comments from the public? Shall we close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
So I propose that the planning board adopt the following recommended findings as facts. One, the applicant's agent is Brian...
Yergation.
Yergation, thank you.
Perfect.
From BSC Group Inc. Two, the property owner, the property is owned by Kenneth U. Banks trustee, Tigger Realty Trust, 349 Route 28, East D, West Dartmouth, pass 02673. Three, the subject property is 237 Queen Anne Road, map 58, parcel N4-2-0, in the Industrial Limited IL zoning district. Four, the proposed project is to construct a new commercial pre-engineered steel building, 7,398 square feet, with 20 new parking spots, including two accessible parking spaces. Screened dumpster, as indicated on the revised plan, site plan dated 2/7/2025. This is the language that I just want to add, related to the parking. The development requires 24 parking spaces. The planning board finds that the grassy area can be used as overflow parking to reach the 24 parking space requirement. Five, the existing vegetation and trees along Queen Anne Road and the east and west boundaries of the property shall not be clearcut and remain as an existing buffer and screening as shown on the revised site plan. Additional landscaping shall conform to the revised site plan. Six, the application for a site plan review special permit was filed on December 13, 2024. Seven, subject to the conditions of approval stated herein, the application and site plan conform to Sections 325-55 and 325-51 of the Harwich Code. And eight, the planning board will hold, has held a public hearing on February 11, 2025, continued from January 28, 2025? Do we open it on?
Have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
We still have to vote.
One more. One more, yeah.
So the planning board, I move that the planning board vote to approve a site plan review special permit in accordance with the prior findings of fact is adopted and subject to the following conditions of approval. One, the proposed project shall be in accordance with the site plan and revised site plan dated 1/24/2025, referenced in the application materials listed above. Two, the proposed project will not adversely impact traffic and safety. The proposed project is compatible with the surrounding land uses within the Industrial Limited Zone. Three, the proposed project is to remove existing concrete and shed structures to construct a new commercial pre-engineered steel building of 7,398 square feet with a total of 20 parking spaces, including two handicap spaces. Four, the proposed dumpster shall be screened by a fence as shown on a revised site plan. Five, the existing vegetation and trees along Queen Anne Road, particularly to the northeast side of the property, shall not be clearcut and remain as an existing buffer and screening as shown on the revised site plan. Six, additional landscaping shall conform to the revised site plan. Seven, all fencing shall conform to the revised site plan. Eight, all materials, heavy equipment and heavy trucks shall be stored indoors. Nine, any new signage shall comply with the Code of the Town of Harwich, zoning Sections 325, Sections 20, subsections 25 through 28. Ten, all new exterior lighting shall be dark sky compliant. Any additional exterior or parking lot lighting shall be dark sky compliant. Eleven, the applicant has submitted a stormwater and drainage plan. Twelve, there shall be no storage of hazardous materials on the site. Thirteen, the septic system shall be reviewed and approved by the Board of Health. Fourteen, this decision shall run with the property. Conditions of approval shall be binding on future owners. Fifteen, this special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the filing of the decision, and either that no appeal has been filed or that an appeal has been filed within such time period is recorded at the registry of deeds and indexed under the name of the property owner and the record, property owner of record and the parcel address. Sixteen, the special permit shall lapse within two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal, referred to in General Law, Chapter 48, Section 17, from the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced, except for good cause, or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction does not begun by such date, except for good cause. Seventeen, changes to the site not authorized under this decision shall require further planning board review and modification to this decision. And eighteen, the applicant shall conform with the inspection certification and as-built plan requirements outlined pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich.
Motion, may I have a second?
Christine, has a...
Really quick, may I, if I may, make a recommendation? If we could, the site plan, use the updated site plan revised date for February 7?
So that was in item number...
I believe it was in number one.
February 7, 2025?
Yes.
So I would correct recommended condition of approval, number one, to reflect our February 7, 2025 date.
Stamped February 7 by the town.
I'm sorry?
Stamped.
Stamped.
Yeah. Thank you.
Stamped as of February 7, 2025.
So we will take a second on their revised motion then? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Yergation. Thank you, Mr. U. Banks.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
You, too. This brings us to approval of the minutes.
I think a motion to approve the minutes of January 14, 2025, and January 28, 2025.
Some moves. Or seconded, I guess, is what I meant to say. Sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention. I didn't get them.
I think I have to abstain because I wasn't there.
So, that being said, we now move to the town planner update. We have a DRI.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. The Cape Cod Commission commenced their public hearing for the Witchmere redevelopment project, and I did submit staff evaluation, not staff evaluation, but a consistency with local comprehensive plan information, as well as consistency or requirements that will be needed at the local level. And I submitted that in a page, in a letter to the commission, also outlining that we would, the town would be interested in reserving the opportunity to provide further comment regarding parking issues, traffic, built, other community benefits, as well as community character, because the building is significantly larger than what's existing. And so building and scale en massing are issues that will still need to be examined. And hopefully, at the commission level, they have certain legislative powers that I think are important for us to be aware of. And if there is an opportunity to express any concerns, this may be a good time to do that. I will provide.
When you say this, meaning?
For the town.
Is there a time window for which we have to?
So I'm going to reach out to commission staff just to find out a little bit more in terms of their process. They have started their public hearing process with their subcommittee. And then I believe they go to the full commission, but I want to confirm what the process is and what their expectations are from, what their expectations or needs are, if the town wants to provide some comments or input. But that, without having to put, you know, anyone at risk of prejudging a project in any manner, that would be in conflict with our review process at the local level.
So and when would our review process take place?
Our review process would take place once the commission, the commission can either approve or approve with conditions or deny a project. So if it's approved as presented or approved with conditions, it comes back to the local boards, for local boards to then start their regulatory review process.
So we wouldn't really have an opportunity to have seen sufficient material in the project until we've had our hearing process opened, which is probably, what, later this spring or this?
I don't know how long this, their process takes. This is the first time I've been involved with the Cape Cod Commission review, DRI review. But their architectural renderings are available, as well as their planning, their parking management plan, their traffic studies, in addition to the architectural renderings in site plan for the project. So our planning assistant did send that to all of the board members. I have also reached out to all of the town departments to ask for updates in terms of what their regulatory review processes are. And I incorporated their comments into the letter that I submitted. I'll also share my letter, the letter to the board as well. In addition, Ann had asked that we look into the LCP, and in addition to the mission statement of the LCP, so, of the draft LCP that's currently ongoing.
Was this their reconstruction of the Snow Inn, essentially?
Yes.
Correct.
And the scale of it?
Yes. And it's significant. It's a substantial redevelopment project. And so I will also send, resend those links as well. But their next public hearing is February 25, but I did want to at least provide an update to the committee on that, to the board on that.
Christine, just a question on process. Since I've gone through, there's a lot of material, a lot of it very good, especially the staff report. Is the recommendation that we comment on that material and put it in a letter, or what is the recommendation?
I'm going to follow up with commission staff and to ask them what their normal process is for town boards to comment. So I'm going to follow up with them and then report back in an email to everyone. And if the board wishes to provide comments, we can work out a series of time to provide comment and input. Because it's a substantial project, and I want to make sure that it's done as a discussion item at a planning board meeting as part of an agenda item. And I'll follow up relative to what the process is and make sure that there's a timeline and to make sure that, you know, we have ample opportunity to submit comments.
The staff report, I think, is about 20 pages.
Correct.
And filled with a lot of very good information and suggestions for a modification of what's been submitted. There were also 32 or more letters submitted by neighbors, and lots of discussion on traffic. I mean, this is a project that's tripling. They've also asked for a coastal resiliency waiver to build in basically the flood plain.
So my big concern is for us to go on the record for the Cape Cod Commission before we've heard any evidence. Is that a reasonable concern? I mean, we haven't heard from the applicant. We would simply be looking at material that they've kind of predigested for us.
I, my, my.
Does that present any ethical issues for us?
What's that?
Does that present us any ethical issues where we might have, you know, ready, fire, aim kind of situation?
So that's what I wanted to, I want to talk with commission staff in terms of some guidance of what town, what other towns have done and what the protocol is. But also, I do think, you know, relative to the commission, we may want to avoid issues of prejudgment. But if there are opportunities that the commission's legislation, you know, in terms of architectural review, other things that we don't have the ability to regulate, though I would say let's look to those areas for an opportunity to maybe ask them to give some careful consideration relative to those potential impacts to, you know, the neighbors, but also the water, the views from any public viewpoints, particularly from the harbor, because this is in addition to Route 28 coming into Harwich board. So I think, you know, any of those sensitivities would be recommended. But again, I'll, I'll, once I follow up with commission staff, I'll outline some information and report back to the board.
So I might be restating. So as the, so Cape Cod Commission looks at it, they say, yay, looks great. They send it to us? Is that what happens?
They will give it a very thorough review according to their regional policy plan. And so right now, the staff report is very extensive. It's 21 pages. And so they will evaluate it. And I think there's an opportunity while the public hearing process is open, they sometimes will go back and modify questions. The applicant may do modifications to the plans as throughout the process. So I think there's a fair amount of give and take to meet certain criteria that's expected at the commission, at the regional level.
And their criteria is significantly different than our criteria.
Correct.
It's broader, basically.
Yes. And they also have additional powers that, you know, relative to natural resource protection, architectural review, traffic, historic character, coastal resiliency, that go beyond what we have at the local level in terms of our zoning and regulations.
I have a question about, in my time on the board, I don't think we've interacted with, to my knowledge or to my memory, interacted with the Cape Cod Commission. What's the chain of command here? And how is that, is this project overseen, the actual execution and construction overseen by town building department or by the Cape Cod Commission? Or is there, how exactly does that shake out in terms of chain of command?
So the project was submitted to the town. I referred it to the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact, because it meets the mandatory DRI threshold for a commercial expansion of 10,000 square feet of floor area or more. And so once that process, so once the commission accepts the DRI, they start their review process. And, you know, they have multiple meetings with the staff and applicant. And then, once the staff have determined that the application is complete, they start their public hearing process. Once they complete their public hearing process, they close the hearing and they make a decision, again, they can approve it, approve it with conditions or deny the project. If they approve it and approve it with conditions, it comes back to the local level to start our regulatory process. And we can make conditions more strict, but not less restrict than the commission's conditions. And also, once it goes for building depart, you know, once we, say if we did approve a project, like any other project we approve, it then goes to filing a building permit, goes through the building department like any other project.
If they approve it with conditions or whatever, it comes to us and we're like, no way. Is that possible?
We, the town has an option to deny a project.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what, I was just making sure, like, our.
But we are a site plan review, so our expectations for approval or approving with conditions. So, you know, site plan review is not something that we normally would deny, unless there were extreme conditions.
I'm not prejudging, are you? I'm just throwing it out there.
Just out of curiosity, what would be the process for environmental impact approval? I mean, this is built, this is right on the beach, built on sand. What, how, would that, would the state need to, would there be another step involved for the state to evaluate that?
There is some state criteria and state involvement, DEP, with their onsite wastewater management system. So DEP will be involved on that. In terms of other environmental implications, you know, there will be evaluation from the conservation commission for a notice of intent in terms of wetland protect, Mass and Local Wetlands Protection Act, because it's in close proximity of a coastal bank, a coastal beach, and the harbor as well.
It's not in, it's on all of those things, right? And they've already filed for a waiver of the coastal resiliency piece. So there's a lot of information, not to prejudge, but to get informed, because this is a really big project.
It will still need to go before the conservation commission for a notice of intent as well.
But also to bear in mind, it's a fraction of the size of the Belmont Hotel, in terms of the number of rooms and the footprint. So just considering.
Belmont's not even a hotel anymore, though.
No, it doesn't exist anymore. But I'm just saying, in terms of what the Cape has had before, this is, you know, even in our town, it's not going to be the largest one. I'm not, like, prejudging it either. I'm just saying, just dimensionally speaking, it's huge, and it's much bigger than what was there, but it's, you know, it's not the biggest show of town.
Significant.
My editorial comment, and all it is is editorial, is we've spent a number of meetings on housing production plans, long-range plans, and then you open this, and it's like in direct contradiction to what we've just been going through. So it's not a legal opinion. It's a, none of this makes, none of this makes any sense when you go through it.
So I actually look at it very differently than you on that. I don't think this flies in the face of a housing production plan. This is one of our existing hotels that's adding, that's trying to add space as best they can to increase their business. No different than what Quasid did, no different than the Belmont did back in the day, you know, pre-1970s. So I don't think, I don't think necessarily this flies in the face of the housing production plan. I think it's, I think it's an existing business. It's trying to maximize the business on the location that they have. And whether it passes DRI approval, and then whether it passes ours is another whole story, but I wouldn't.
Putting it in context, and it's more the long-range plan that we're going through. Who do we want to be? What do we want to look like? How do we want to thrive? And, you know, we spent a joint meeting on that and a couple of other things. And then you look at a project like this, and it doesn't, doesn't make a lot of sense to me in terms of its size and scope and its location. That's just an editorial comment, not a legal comment.
So I appreciate your editorial comment, and I guess I would make, take the opportunity to make my own. We, I really hope the housing production plan isn't going against larger businesses in the Town of Harwich. We need as many large hotels as we need small hotels and restaurants and shopping areas to go with the housing and everything else. I mean, it's a, they're a large taxpayer in the Town of Harwich. We get a lot of, we get a lot of rooms tax and rooms revenue from them. They're a large taxpayer, so.
That's an economic argument, right? And I was talking about the more aspirational argument, which was we were seven villages, and how do we want to look and how do we want to preserve? Economically, I can make the case that, you know, tripling will greatly increase their business. But I, to me, it goes in the face of who do we want to be? What do we want to look like? And at what cost?
Well, before we go any further into the water, but I just, all I want to say is, like, you know, I think we're going to have our hands full when, if and when it does get to us, because I think really salient issues are going to be, there's a lot of sensitivity about development along Davis Lane, around what's going to be happening, and Witchmere Harbor as property owners around the perimeter of the harbor, as well as the yacht club and the impact on, you know, all the hundreds of members of that. So we're going to have a lot of community feedback coming in here. It's going to be, we're going to be spinning a lot of plates. So before we go, you know, and somebody has to recuse themselves from sitting on the hearing, let's not go there. We don't have enough personnel yet. So, anyway, do we, are we up to date on that? We've got the ADU.
Yes. So last night at the board of selectmen's meeting, they did take a vote to pass the town council's recommended language for the ADU bylaw amendment. That will be in compliance with the state regulation. To hand it off to myself and then present it to the planning board, and we can start. I'll work out a schedule for public hearings and to fill out the Form 7 Attorney General's process for zoning amendments. There is a process for the planning board, as well as for myself and the town clerk to work together to make sure that we're hitting all of the regulatory procedures when we do a zoning amendment. So.
Is this going to be in the May town meeting?
It will be on the May town meeting.
We're like racing to the finish line here, right? I mean, to get this under the wire or no?
No, no. You have 60 days prior to the.
For the final language?
For the final language. We already have the language from town council. Town council and staff have been working on this, as well as administration. So we should be fairly, we're in good condition in terms of the language and.
We just need to schedule our public hearing.
We need to schedule a public hearing, correct. And I will update you relative to time and dates and what's required, as well as what the overall process is required, because this is my first time at the rodeo, so I'd be more than happy to share the pain, if you will. I'm kidding. So more on that, but I did want to just provide an update. And I will send out the letter that I sent regarding Witchmere to everyone as well, so.
Great. And then we need to get a link on the Worcester event in March.
Okay, yes.
If that'd be possible, just because, you know, I think if we're going to do, have we spoken about this before?
We did once.
Okay. Has anybody been to that? Because I did it last year or the year before. Because I did it last year or the year before.
I went, um.
Do we go to?
Couple of years ago. Yeah, a couple of years ago.
Did we all go? I'm trying to remember.
No, we didn't because then we have to be a meeting.
Because I went, I think I've been twice, but it's like, you want, if we're going to have more than one, you know, one of us, we got to figure out how to do that and then just go to different meetings and cover as much material as we can, I would think. Divide and conquer.
Yeah, that was my question. There's so many things to go to you, I think it's, you kind of, like you said, divide and conquer and cover and then discuss.
Beware.
Let's beware. I was going to say, so like sooner rather than later, if we're going to think about it, at least maybe we ought to circulate an email chain on the reply to that and see if we can, if this stuff germines to our, you know, agenda as we see this coming up here, so.
Absolutely. The last time I checked, they hadn't announced the classes, but once, once they do, I'll follow up this week and, you know, if there are any changes, but I will reset a link for the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative Conference.
And do we have an updated schedule for this next year of meetings?
Yes, I sent that out earlier in January.
But you sent it with a question because of the things around holidays and I don't think we ever answer them.
Do we need to adopt that or, I'm, I'm happy to reset it. Did, I did ask a question relative to Thanksgiving and Christmas.
And we never got, we never finished.
Yeah, we didn't resolve those, but at least I think we're set for the next six months or so.
Correct.
I have a document here called twenty twenty-five Planning Board Hearing Meeting Schedule, is that the one?
Yes.
Okay. Well, the board hearing kind of threw me off.
Hearing as opposed to filing, right? It had two usually.
It had the filing dates and the meeting dates, correct.
All right, any other business before the board? I'm entering a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? You manate.
Thank you.
Christine, would you like these papers and files to plan's back?
Absolutely. I'm happy to clarify, clean house.
And the Belmont.
Yeah, I remember.
She went over there. Giving away all the stuff, so some of the beams from Belmont.
I've got Belmont Hotel plates.
The first thing I noticed was.
I've got a whole folder full of things.
The carpet out when I came in the elevator.
Receipts, it was like, a room back then was like forty-seven dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Handprints.
But you could see it underneath it.
Brochures.
The doors to the bedrooms are still just slanted.